Good morning, Mr. Manager. Where's your staff at today?
Well, the significant ones are here.
The significant ones are here. Do you want to say anything about Kate? I know she's on vacation, but you may want to...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'll let her supervisor stand up and cover by the outstanding awards she wore.
Friday, it was announced that Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Strategic Communications Department, was awarded the Young Professionals of Wichita Distinguished Professional Award. There were five nominees for that award, and two were awarded with Kate being one of those. So, we're very proud of her work and what she does for the community, so...
She's off celebrating now, is that the deal?
She's busy blowing last time. She was celebrating there. All right, Mr. Manager, what you got for us today?
We actually have a busy agenda today, Commissioners. We have four topics we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about Cedric County Park, a couple of different items with the ADA projects, and also pond bank stabilization. So, Tanya will go first, and then David Spears will follow. And then Brent's going to come up and talk about the Cedric County Fair building that you had brought to us. And then I actually added a fourth item because it's really quick, but there's a partnership opportunity between the Greater Wichita Partnership, the City of Wichita, and Cedric County to get a tent at the airshow. And so, he's going to brief that because we need to, if we're going to do that, we need to go ahead and pay the bill. So, without further ado, I will have Tanya kick it off.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. At the CIP workshop this past June, you were provided with an update on our ADA transition plan with those remaining items to be completed. At that time, we heard from Commissioners that they would like to hear more additional information on the Cedric County Park ADA items. Cedric County Park has a number of ADA improvements required throughout the park. Project Services worked with our on-call architect to develop an overall master plan to make the park accessible. In the last several years, we've added an accessible dock with all related amenities being accessible, as well as four additional areas. This morning, Valerie Castor, Project Services Manager, will provide a more detailed summary of the Cedric County Park transition plan for full compliance by the end of 2018. And I'd also like to point out that Mark Schroff is here today as well. So, Valerie?
Thank you, Tanya. Hi, I'm Valerie Castor, Project Services Manager, and she mentioned I'm here to talk to you about Cedric County Park, the transition plan. A quick overview of what I will be discussing. The construction cost estimate is $431,500. The estimated construction timeframe is six months. And our current bid dates include a release of August 20th, with the bids coming back on September 28th, going to bid board on October 4th, and B.O.C.C. on October 10th. The updates for this project will be working on including providing accessible benches, picnic areas, parking spaces, and paths of travel. Cedric County Park is comprised of 645 acres. This land includes fishing ponds and eight shelters... I'm sorry, five fishing ponds and eight shelters. The park receives approximately 1 million visitors every year, and it offers 4.33 miles of biking trails and 3.79 miles of walking and running trails. There are multiple picnic and barbecue areas, softball fields, volleyball, tennis, basketball, rollerblade, and bocce ball courts, as well as playgrounds and a sledding hill. Cedric County Park has completed multiple upgrades with... I'm sorry. Cedric County has completed multiple upgrades within Cedric County Park. You should all have a slide in front of you of the site... I'm sorry, a site plan in front of you. Previous work in the park includes a new accessible dock, a large shelter for picnic tables, renovation of existing smaller shelters for grills and picnic tables, an observation area, and some accessible parking and paths. The site plan you have highlights the 15 areas that this new park will be... I'm sorry, that this new project will be covering. The projects have been spread out to, number one, ensure appropriate compliance throughout the park, and, number two, to achieve compliance in the most economical manner that we could come up with. Please don't mind the additional numbers on the labels. That was part of the original master plan. In the next few slides, I'll briefly go over what we will be updating and why. To begin with, the picnic tables. These have specification requirements that include things such as the tables to be of a certain height, have a space left to open for a forward approach, have knee-leg and toe clearances, 36 inches of ground, clear ground space around the table for wheelchairs to maneuver, et cetera. ADA also requires that 20% of these tables be accessible with a minimum of two being required. The way it is at Cedric County Park, we have sheltered and unsheltered tables. We have 77 single unsheltered tables, so 20% of that works out to be 16 that we will need to be adding. Of the five sheltered tables, single sheltered tables that we have, the math works out on that to where we need to add two accessible tables. This means we'll be adding a total of 18 accessible tables for this transition plan. These outdoor commercial-grade tables are currently estimated around $1,000 each, and so, that's going to run approximately $18,000 for tables.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Are those tables any of that, from that recycled plastic? Like, 15 years ago, you were doing some of that out at Lake Afton? Is that what... Are these going to be made out of that stuff so they last longer than all of them going to live?
I'm not sure if they're made out of that recycled plastic. They have been chosen for their longevity. The wood they're picking is, I think it's a white oak?
White pine.
White pine, sorry, because they have found over the years that it lasts the longest for repainting. That's how they were selected.
Okay. Well, just a question.
Okay. I can follow up and find out precisely what the rest of them are made of. The grills are also required to be accessible. Some of the features in the ones we're looking to provide have an accessible cooking surface height, compliant maneuverable reaches, and the ability for single-handed operation. The ADA transition plan requires that 50% of the grills be accessible. There are currently 28 in the park with three of them already approved. That leaves us needing 11. We have estimated them to be about $500 each, so that adds up to $5,500 for grills. Benches are also required to be accessible. There are a number of specified dimensions for the seat and the back support, as well as clear ground space around the seat for wheelchairs to maneuver. Cedric County Park has 21 benches, and 20% are required to be accessible. We are adding seven. We've estimated the benches at 750 apiece. That adds up to 5250. And finally, accessible parking, accessible amenities, and paths of travel. Accessible parking is required at all accessible amenities and facilities, and is required to be located on the shortest path of travel to these amenities and facilities. Accessible parking for this project will include either updating an existing space or creating a new one. The new one will have the required slope, paving materials, striping, signage, access to an accessible path of travel, et cetera. This project is looking to provide 15 ADA accessible parking spaces. It is also specified in our ADA transition plan that one of each kind of amenities and facilities at Cedric County Park is on an accessible route. In this project, that includes the horseshoe areas, rollerblade court, basketball, tennis, and bocce ball courts, and one of the covered bridges. And then finally, 5% of all the benches that we are installing need to have accessible paths to them. And an accessible path is defined as being at least 36 inches wide, having an approved material such as concrete, asphalt, or rubber, and it needs to have the allowed length and slope ratios. So, paving is where the rest of our estimated budget will be going, approximately $402,750. This includes everything from the demoing existing concrete, clearing landscaping, installing concrete or asphalt where required, adding borders, adding walkways, striping, signage, grading, et cetera, et cetera. Oh, I went one too far. Anyway. In summary, the benches, grills, and tables are estimated to cost $28,750. The paving is estimated around $402,750, which gives us the overall construction cost estimate of $431,500. And again, the overall construction timeframe is approximately six months from the award of bid. Can I answer any questions?
Does the entire park have to be handicap accessible? I know that we're making that Art Park, or whatever we're calling it today, handicap accessible, and the Boundless Playground. Do we have to do everything?
Everything falls into a percentage. So, for example, like when I was reading about the 20% of picnic tables. So, and the way it's been designed was you can't segregate any area, the ADA, to just one part of the park. So, you have to spread out the accessible amenities throughout the park. So, in a way, yes, all the park will be, will have a feature available. So, the bridges, we're picking one bridge to make accessible instead of, unfortunately, all the bridges are not. But, if that answers the question.
One other question. We've been talking about a bridge over on the north side so that people don't get run over on that one-lane road. Is that part of it, or are you doing that?
I'll talk about that in a minute. I'm up next.
I asked David to cover that.
Okay.
Mr. Andrew?
Do they play much bocce ball out there?
Every Tuesday.
Oh, they have a league-type thing?
Well, it's a league. It's just a wall of regular people. The same group comes out every Tuesday, and they park there and have to walk all the way over to the bocce ball court. And it gets used every Tuesday.
Well...
Well, it stops snowing and raining.
Are they ADA folks? I mean...
Yes.
Okay, so, all right. Another question. How come Horseshoe Lake doesn't look like a horseshoe?
I will have to look that up for you.
I guess there's no other questions. Thank you.
All right.
Morning. I'd like to tell you, David Spears, I'd like to tell you about the improvements we're making out at the park. Everybody's pretty excited about it. Just have four slides here to show you. This one, first one's an overview of the whole park, and then we have blowups sort of the south end, central, and then the north end. And then I'll answer your question, Commissioner Dennis. Well, this year, by contract, well, you can see the whole outline, about eight and a half miles in yellow of the path, and we did 7,500 pounds of hot pour, 29,010 pounds of mastic, and 149 lineal feet of thermal crack. Now, the hot pour was $10,000 out by contract. The mastic was $30,000. The thermal crack repair was three. We've also made some new paths. You see down at the south end in the dark blue. That has been constructed by contract through the Art Park. And then we also made a connection down there at the south end for safety purposes. And we're also going to do some more up north. But what we paid out so far is about $15,000 on those paths. And then the high-density seal on the parking lots, you can see in the light blue color, those three. And then we'll do the striping also. That was another $32,000. So, we paid out nine... That adds up to $90,000 by contract. And then we are also doing a lot of other work up there. And just so you know, the difference, don't want to get down the weeds too far here because I don't know how many people really are interested, but the hot pour, mastic, and thermal, the hot pour is just sort of a liquid fill that you put in small cracks that are like an eighth of an inch to five-eighths of an inch. Then the mastic is the same as a hot pour except it's got some real fine aggregate in it. And you put that in a little bit larger cracks. Then that's from five-eighths to one and a half inches. Then one and a half on up, we do thermal crack repair where you completely grind it out, and then you fill it up with rock and then mastic on top of that. So, just a detail that you'll probably want to forget within the next 10 minutes. Okay, so, I think I've gone over all of everything. You see also the orange up there. That's the loop road. That's in the CIP to do. We're not doing that. So, but part of that bank stabilization in the red you see up at the north end and that other blue, we're going to do that, and still going to try to get that done this year. So, we'll save some money out of the CIP on that part. So, we'll move on here. You can see at the south end, that's just a little bit of a blowup there, what we're going to do. If I can... There's a mouse. You see how this was before? That was not there, the blue. It's there now. But before, what you had was kind of a safety problem because people would come flying through here on bikes, and then they'd come around here and go like that. Whoops, didn't want that. So, what we did, we just put that down there to separate the cars from the bikes there a little bit and do that. And then this is the Art Park path, and that's been constructed over there. And then here, the tree removal, I didn't mention that. I went out there and rode the whole thing myself on my bike, and the cracks, I thought, were not a problem. I really give them an A+ for what they did on that. But the worst thing I thought was the tree roots, and there's about 10 of them sitting there. We have that circled in purple there, and we're going to extract all those tree roots. They're up about that high on the path, and that really bothers you when you're trying to ride through on a bike. So, there's about 10 places, and we're going to cut those out, remove them, and refill that and make it smooth again. All right. This is the north end. Now, to your question, Commissioner Dennis, see the old, you came down here on the yellow, and then right here is a conflict because you have the bicycles, the walkers, the skaters, and then you have the cars going through here. And so, what we're going to do is separate, we're going to build this right here to connect these like that. Now, we'll probably also have to do some work along that bank there. And then we're going to do bank stabilization down here, and we'll do this with all of our crews. And the way, we have to put in a pipe here. There's already a pipe under there, but we're going to extend that, put another pipe in under here. So, then we're going to put concrete on top of that to separate the pedestrians from the cars. So, that should work out pretty good, I think. Here is a balanced playground, and then we'll redo that with the high-dense material, HA5. And that's a real good, that's better than a fog seal. We're going to fog seal the entire path with our forces. The HA5 is sort of a, I don't know, a fog seal on steroids. So, it will last longer because on the parking lot with the cars coming in and out all the time. And like I say, the orange route, that's in the CIP still for a year or two down. That's something we can look at later to see if maybe we can do, but no promises on that yet. Okay, this is the central area. You can see more tree roots, more parking lot improvements. We'll also have to re-stripe those parking lots. Let's see. That's 4,767 lineal feet of new striping that'll go in. I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. And that's it. Need to answer any questions. We're all pretty excited. Everybody kind of supports the park. Mark told me that a million people go in there a year. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
It's really, for us at Public Works, who've been there a while, we can see how that's grown over the years. When it first started, there were not, there were no bicycle paths. There was, the road through there was all gravel. And, you know, whenever somebody went onto dirt and dust all over the place, we didn't have that many visitors. But now, it's really exploded.
What is this bank stabilization thing? What does that entail?
It entails putting some rock riprap along the side of the shore.
And that's a pretty small area. We've got a lot of lakes out there. Is that the only place that it needs it, or...
No, it's really not, but I think we'll just do a piece at a time. That's pretty expensive, that large, that's that large rock riprap, so...
Mr. Andrew, you got a question?
Well, a comment, a comment and a question. A comment is that I agree that this is quite an asset for Cedric County as far as our response to what seems to be a demand for quality of place. I mean, this is really an outstanding asset, and we need to keep it up. So, I'm glad we have this planned to do that. But a question I had is we've all been recently visited by the folks who started the Boundless Playground, saying that they want a little more support for their maintenance. But aren't we, how much are we having to do to maintain the Boundless Playground area now? I mean, are we keeping it usable, or what's the story?
Our piece of that is that we're responsible for the repairs on the equipment. And we've had to make, now since that's going on nine years old, we're start season wear, terracotta. We replaced bearings. We replaced slides. We replaced a lot of stuff. As that ages, of course, that's going to become more and more often things that we have to do. So, we take care of the repairs. The Rotary Club comes in, they do cleanups twice a year. And once they get rid of that, all those sand features, that's going to become a lot easier because that sand is scattered all over that playground on that rubber surface. And that's really kind of a damaging effect on that rubber with that sand even ground into that. So, they realize that they need to get rid of that sand stuff, so it's going to go away with these upgrades they're doing.
Okay, they, years ago, they requested that we bring in sand, didn't they?
Yeah, that was to fill in the sand features of the kids that carried all that other sand out and scattered all over the rubber surface. So, that was just to fill back in what had been carried out.
But we're not, we're going to quit doing that because it's destructive.
That sand needs to go away.
Okay. So, is there a sense that we need to consider this request? I mean, are we pretty much doing stuff in our current budget? Because they said we'd like a line item in the budget to guarantee we're going to get maintenance and so forth, and I kind of thought we were doing a pretty good job of it, and I just didn't know. I just need to get some guidance on getting my mind right.
I don't quite understand what they're wanting. I know they want money, but I've heard they want us to give them the money, then they roll this over into account and then try to save up enough money to replace that rubber surface. And she talked, Rita talked about $5,000 a year, and that rubber surface is going to be over $100,000. So, it's going to take a lot of years to bank up $100,000.
Well, they haven't spent the 30 we gave them last year yet, have they?
Not yet, but that's coming.
Well, I mean, I want to be supportive, and I think it's a great asset. And the Balanced Playground is really a wonderful thing. But I mean, I just don't know how much we have to itemize in our budget and how much we're just going to do because we do it.
Yeah.
So, someone's going to help me figure that out.
This point has come out of operating budget.
Okay, okay.
Same with us. We have no line item for it. We just take it out overall.
Do what's reasonable, just need, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right, David, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We'll have Brent something.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first item this morning is a funding request from the Cedric County Fair Association. And just briefly to summarize, they're a nonprofit volunteer-based group that has operated the annual Cedric County Fair every July in Cheney. Their mission is to, quote, "provide an atmosphere where families and friends can gather." The fair's been around since the 1940s. There's about 25,000 a year that attend the fair. It is always with free admission. What they are requesting is $100,000 in one-time funding to replace Building 2 at the fair. And you're familiar with this. We've got some pictures that they provided to Chairman Dennis. I think you've seen these. But some of the deterioration that's going on in Building 2, this is a vendor building. They have about 18 to 20 vendor sites in here that they operate at the fair. Public access is the building during the fair. And there's some safety concerns as well as dysfunctional obsolescence. You can see a door here that is pretty much beyond repair. What they are proposing is to replace that building with one that is like Building 3, which that's adjacent to Building 2. This building was constructed in 2006. At the time, they spent about $60,000, plus a lot of volunteer labor. And you can see Building 2 sitting here, adjacent to Building 3, which is what they want to have, kind of replicate what Building 3 looks like on this site. That's another shot of Building 3. But basically, it's a $100,000 request. They do not have specific firm numbers yet on what this is going to cost. They're basing it on what they did 12 years ago. They've offered volunteer labor to do the concrete, the site work, and things like that. Their option, if they don't have this funding support, would be that within the next year or two, they're going to have to raise Building 2 just because of safety concerns. It would then be open space until the money's raised for them to replace it with the replica of Building 3. So, that's basically what they're asking for at this time. Been talking with Brett Albers, who's the president of the Fair Association, and he is planning to attend the August 9 budget hearing, and he can address more detailed questions at that time. And I think also to thank you for the annual support that you provide to the Fair Association. So, I'll answer any questions or go find information.
Any questions?
I have a couple. I can see from the pictures, obviously, that door has damage. But I don't see, other than that, it looks like it needs paint, and the doors that move, it looks like they could use some repair. But what exactly is the safety issue that we're concerned about?
I think they're talking about potential for leaks, and I think maybe it has leaked in the past. But it's just, they don't feel like they can repair the building to house the number of folks that are coming and going during those four days of the fair.
I guess I'd like to have someone in the repair business take a look at that and see what it would cost to repair that building.
Okay.
I mean, I can see a coat of paint, maybe a new roof, and replace that door.
With all the wood structure inside, that all that tin nails to is all pretty well deteriorating. The roof is sagging. You've got to have something to nail the tin back to. And when there's nothing behind it but air, it makes it a little difficult to drive a nail in.
I just think it'd be prudent to have that as numbers, to know for sure what we're talking about in terms of comparison.
I wish all the Commissioners would have gone to the fair because I did go and walked through that whole area and then talked to them great length. And the building is in bad shape.
Do they use this building besides the, during the four days of the fair?
It has limited use outside that time. Between fair events, they have, it's used for RV and some boat storage. They charge nominal amount, $25 a month for folks that want to store boats or RVs there, and they cap that at $200 a year. He told me also that this past summer that McConnell used it. The 18th Intelligence Wing did some training exercises. And I think they used Building 3 for those exercises. So, they couldn't use 2, but they used some Building 3. So, there's limited use outside the fair itself.
Was the reason they didn't use Number 2, was there a reason why they didn't use Number 2?
From my understanding, it wasn't suitable for what they were going to do. They needed the better facility.
And I'm curious, but who actually owns this building?
It's owned by the Cedric County Fair Association. They own the fairgrounds and the buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
You got questions?
How many buildings are there?
There are, I have probably four or five buildings. They're the ones that are along this area, and then there's some that looked...
Are the other buildings pretty good shape?
This is the one that they say is the most urgent need.
I've been out there. I just can't remember. But clearly, I remember this building. It's not good. I think it takes more than thick paint to fix it, so...
He indicated there are other needs, but this is the most urgent need they have right now.
Okay. I mean, I just didn't know if we were going to do this in the next year. This is, by the way, we have another building. And also, do, when are they planning to get their, oh, their basic drawings so that they have a better idea what this is going to cost? I mean, I'd hate to say now, we, okay, we'll go $100,000, and then they find out, no, this is $150,000. And then, you know, then we've kind of been, we're not obligated. I also don't want to give them $100,000 if they say, hey, you know, with the...
But I also don't want to give them $100, and if they say, hey, you know, with a little bit of help, we can do this for 50, so.
Well, I think they intended to request a not-to- exceed, and they were going to do it for materials. They were going to pretty well take care of the labor.
Right. And, you know, Mr. Albers and I had that same conversation just this morning. And he said, if, if you committed $100 and they got it done for 60, you can have 40 back or only spend the 60. If they had a more comprehensive plan where a Phase 2 or Phase 3 or something, that that money could go toward... They're looking for guidance and, from the Commission, as to what you would like for them to do.
Well, you know, we can't, we can't support every nonprofit that has a request. But this is the Sedgwick County Fair, and it is a nasty building. But, of course, they just don't just keep chickens in there, do they?
The chickens are in a different bill.
One more, one more comment. I guess I'd like to see them define exactly what their building request is, you know, in terms of square footage and amenities, you know, electrical and the type of floor they need. And those, you know, define the building. And I guess it'd be reasonable for, for them to go through a bid process. So, I think they're, rather than just saying they've got a checkbook with money in it, and let's go build the building. I'd like to, you know, basically follow more of a normal process to define the building requirements first, get a bid process to find out what that actually will cost. Because I think we need to define what we're buying before we commit any money to the project.
Okay.
Well, if they're going to do a lot of donated labor, donated stuff, I mean, I don't know how the bid process works in that, but it would be good to know what we're, what we're heading to before we make a decision.
I think if we look to what they did 12 years ago as a precedent, they provided the labor to do the footings, the concrete pad. Evans Building was the contractor, and I think they did that basically at cost. So, they, they got some volunteer work, and they got some, some discounts. So, they seem to be pretty frugal with their dollars.
Any other questions? Any none? Thank you, Brent.
Okay. The, let me go to the next one, okay? The next item is the McConnell Air Force Base Frontiers and Flight Air Show, which is September 8th and 9th this year. It'll be at the airbase. A two-day open house on Saturday and Sunday. And there's an opportunity for a partnership with the City of Wichita and with the Greater Wichita Partnership to sponsor a chalet, which is the premier sponsorship level. That chalet package would include some media exposure, some banners at the, in the chalet. They would also do announcements the day of the show, recognizing sponsors. They've got media exposure prior to. County logo could appear on those types of things. It's, they've got printed materials, social media, and so forth. So, the level of exposure that we want, we could, could provide the logo and so, for them. The chalet itself is a $15,000 sponsorship. The proposal is that it would be split three ways, with our portion being 1/3 or $5,000. In addition to the media exposure, the public relations, there are 100 passes that are available for each of the two days that would be split between the three participants. We haven't arm wrestle to figure out if it's 33 and 34 and 33 or whatever at this point. But that's the idea. There's parking, some food and so forth at the chalet during the show. There were also a Friday night event that's designed for personnel on base. There would be, I think, 10 tickets to that, and the Thunderbirds would be at that event as well. So, basically, it's a $5,000 commitment from the county. We would work with communications to establish the banners, this, the type of, of public relations. The city has not made a commitment yet as to how much they want to promote their sponsorship of the, of the event. So, they, they may not have any, any logos on there at that point. So, they're making that decision, and, and we can follow their lead or do whatever, so.
First of all, I certainly do hope we support this request. We did talk to the mayor about this, and he said he supported it. So, with those comments, I think the city is probably going to be on board along with us. Another thing is that we're, understand the crew of the USS Wichita is probably going to be in town during that airshow. And Wichita was going to host them, hopefully with their 33 tickets that day.
Okay.
But McConnell is one of the major employers in Sedgwick County. And I, I think it's very important that we support McConnell Air Force Base. So, I definitely support the $5,000 request.
Sounds good.
I'm just trying to remember, there was a news story years ago. I think, I'm not sure if it was the last time this happened or maybe before that, but city and county, I think, partnered together to do, did a chalet. And there was a news story about the elites were able to access the tent, and the public was not allowed to access the tent. And then, that got reversed during that controversy. So, who can access this tent, and what's the purpose of the tent? Is it just to hand out, says opportunity for public relations? Is that the point, is that the purpose of the tent? Or is it a place for people to get out of the sun, the public? Do they have to have a ticket to get in? Where do they get the tickets? What's, what are the details in terms of who can access the tent?
The chalet itself is a 30 by 30 tent that would be accessible to those with a ticket. And there would be some food and beverages in that chalet. There are also different vendor tables, if you will, I think, that are set up along the runway that are accessible to the public. So, you would have to have a ticket to get into the chalet.
Well, at the end of that controversy that happened years ago, where do we end up? Is that, is that where we ended up? Because I think that was reversed during that discussion. Does anybody know?
I'm not familiar with all those details. I do know there was some controversy about that. But that's one of the considerations, and that may be why the city isn't wanting to do as much promotion of the chalet itself.
I mean, yeah, okay. So, I do want to have a presence at the, at the air, at the airshow. I think that's important to show McConnell we support them. And I think it's great to have a tent there, but I think it ought to benefit the public. And, so, I'm not sure if that's what this is doing exactly. And again, the public needs to have low-cost or no-cost access to this if they're paying for it. So, I guess my support to this is going to be contingent a little bit on understanding the details. I support the idea of supporting McConnell, and I love the airshow. Don't get me wrong, but I want to make sure that the public is included in whatever we're setting up here, so.
But the cost of this helps offset the cost of putting on the airshow for the public to be able to get in free.
Sure, I understand that. And I'm glad to support the $5,000. I just want to make sure that this tent, at the end of the day, is a taxpayer benefit that they can access in some way.
But I think it does have a taxpayer benefit because it helps McConnell pay for the airshow, which allows the public to come in free.
I think Commissioner Howell's memory's correct. I think, I don't know, maybe Lindsey remembers, but I think that we continued to give money, but we didn't have a chalet, and we didn't get free tickets, we didn't do anything. We just supported for the very reason about, you know, spending taxpayer money for us to have a party. And so, I don't know, we need to figure that out. We need to support the airshow, but we may, we may have to take a tax similar to what the city implies, that we're going to support it, but, you know, we're not, we're not going to be... Except for, you know, hosting the members of the USS Wichita. I mean, we, somehow, we need to work that in there, I think. But, so anyway, somebody needs to figure that out. But I, but that is what happened. We took some criticism because people said, you know.
And at the time, they talked about, you know, giving tickets to the Kansas senators and Kansas representatives and all the electeds around the area. And they were in there having, I think, a couple of times ago, they were in there enjoying, you know, stuffed mushrooms and things like that, and beverages, all kinds of good stuff. And the way they got in there was they were handed a VIP ticket. And the public's on the outside looking in, thinking, well, we paid for that. And it didn't, it didn't go well. And so, I just think, if we're going to do, and I support the airshow, I support the $5,000, I'm not sure the chalet is necessary to do that. And I, I think that if we are going to have a chalet or a tent, it ought to be completely for the public and not for the elites. That's my only caveat. So, $5,000 for the airshow, I'm fine with that. But if there's going to be an amenity that that creates, then I want that amenity to be accessible to the taxpayers. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? Any none? Thank you, Brent.
You bet.
What else you have this morning, Commissioner? That's it. All right. Commissioners, you have anything you'd like to add? Any of the staff?
I was waiting for Richard.
I'm sorry, do you have something?
I was being polite to Richard. Can you believe that? No. Mark it down. Mr. Manager, were we going to have some kind of report before we get to final decisions about some of the requests for, you know, human services for, for senior centers and for bus transportation, for IDD folks, and help me figure it out?
If you look at the notes card, August 7th, we're going to address all those. So, yes.
So, that is a week from today.
That is correct.
And it's written down, so be it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on the schedule. And August 14th, we'll talk about legislative agenda. And we're also talking about EMS and paramedic analysis that I had Scott and Dr. Gallagher and Rusty conduct.
Okay. Okay. And by the way, from your high-level conference with the manager yesterday, is there anything to, city manager, anything to report?
Yeah. Bob Layton and I met to discuss the Andale Fire Incident. And it was a very productive conversation. In the end, we had come to the realization to have to update the fire mutual aid agreement that we produced back November 18th, 1994. We're going to update that to make it, to take out human error out of the agreement and, and also to add and update it based off of the new CAD protocols that in 1994 just weren't there. So, we're going to update the agreement. We're going to keep it to a very small working group. Basically, the four of us, two chiefs and the two managers. And we're going to get that knocked out very quickly. And then, that will leave no doubt of, of our support to them and their support to us.
Good news.
Yes, very good news.
Anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
Actually, I have a comment. I thought, I want to say thank you for getting the Northeast Park on the website. That does look better. But I got, in fact, as I started thinking about that, in fact, I think that the document that Mr. Spears showed us this morning shows that Sedgwick County Art Park still. I think the name was changed to Art Walk, if I remember right. So, with that in mind, I got to thinking about the Northeast Park. I think most of our parks across the entire community are, they have personality. We renamed the Reagan Building, the Reagan Building, rather than 271 Building, to give it some personality. I think it's caught on. I, I think Northeast Park is, is, you know, rather than indicating where it's located, we have to consider giving it some personality, give it a name like Ranza Park or something. Or Unruh Park.
Hey, hey, this is in District 1 now.
Unruh Park is fine.
Don't get too cavalier here.
But we ought to, we ought to have a discussion about potentially renaming that park to give it a little bit of personality. And I don't think it's going to go away. I mean, I think that that's our, that's our wish, but I don't think that's going to happen. So, if it's not going to go away, let's give it some personality. I think it'd be better with a real name rather than just the location of where it's at. Thank you.
Have a big sign out front that says "For Sale."
That'd be fine.
Called "For Sale Park."
If we can do that, but right now, we can't. If we can do that, I, you got my support on that, Mr. Chairman, if that's, if that's an option.
We're still working or have some agenda. We're hoping Congressman Estes is working on getting relief from some of those ridiculous ancient rules.
It's still, it's still in committee.
Still in committee?
Yeah, it's...
It's ridiculous.
That's why I say, you know, once you get an program going, it never goes away. It's just hard to get it reversed, so I don't know. I'll call them again, but it's just...
You know, whoever, whoever's, if you're our liaison with that, we need to keep telling them because it's, it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't.
It does.
Okay. See?
We agree.
We agree.
And if we... It's too repulsive today. And if we can't get it removed, there was a talk one time about getting it moved to some other area in the state.
Well, I don't know if you do it in the state. You might be able to do it within Sedgwick County. It would depend. You don't get permission, but it has to be someplace of equal value.
But I heard there might be a possibility of finding another state park or something that you could move it to.
Well...
But I think we have to buy ground, don't we? I don't know.
We need to look into it, see if, if there are other options. All right, anything else? Mr. O'Donnell, anything? Anything from the staff? Anything from our electeds?
Said, I want to comment that the sheriff's socks are not attractive.
I'll make sure to tell my wife.
Last evening, we, last evening, we recognized our first responders. We had a nice group of folks, Sedgwick County Fire Department was out there, Sheriff Department was out there. So, it was very nice. I appreciated all the folks coming out. Nothing else?